Turn on my microphone. Good evening. Happy holidays and welcome to the December 21st, 2022 meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. Today is the first day of winter, so if you think it's cold, that's why. As is our custom, we'd like to have a moment of silence. And as we do so, maybe we'd like to keep in mind this special time of year, the holiday season, and consider a wish for peace on earth. Please join us in observing a moment of silence. Please join the board in our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No special actions? So that brings us on my chart here to our first round of public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment? Please come to the podium and state your name and where you live in Newtown.
Yes, sir.
You have to, there's a button. There you go.
Okay. Hi. Good evening. Karen DeApril, Newtown Grant. As husband says, biggest and the best. First of all, I want to wish everybody a very happy holiday season. Happy Hanukkah to all the Jewish people, like me, and Merry Christmas to everybody else like me, too. So that's, that's my beginning. Why I'm here is I need somebody to guide me, so I'll have, hopefully, some of you. I was speaking with Piccolo Trattoria, and they have taken an additional parcel to expand their business. They have the final approval, and hopefully, they will be opening it soon. The only problem is they're getting a little antsy because it's holiday season. This is when they would be making their percentage of their money between Christmas, New Year's, Valentine's Day. Is there anything that you guys could do to try and expedite it a little so that they can get their, their Ts crossed and their Is dotted so that they could open up their business? I'm putting it in your hands. Hopefully, I'll get an answer from somebody. Okay? None?
I only, I, I have some info because Piccolo has been calling me a lot, so I've been contacting the township to figure out if there's anything we can do to speed it along. Right now, it looks like, from my understand, and this is not, you know, my full-time job, I'm not, I'm not either engineer or township, I'm just, you know, from the, being up to date on what's going on, we're waiting on something with the Sewer Authority and EDUs. That's what I believe we're at now. And that's out of our hands as a township, and it's out of the engineer's hands, other than explaining to the Sewer Authority, you know, what the usage is going to be and figure out the EDUs. So that's why I understand it's out, and if anyone wants us any other info, I would love to hear it, too, but that's, that's what I understand is going on currently.
Can we ask the solicitor, since he is also a part of the Sewer Authority? Is it EDUs or would it be the grease traps or anything like that?
My understanding is that the bigger problem is the grease trap, that there's a requirement that all the restaurants in town now have 1,000-gallon grease traps as opposed to 50-gallon because of the huge amount of restaurants we have now and the kitchen use. And unfortunately, everybody's required to, to install those, particularly when they're enlarging their floor plan, having more seats and making more food, having more customers. And it's fairly expensive. I don't know how expensive it is, but it's fairly expensive. And that's what I have heard is the holdup. There may be a need for another EDU, but that, that's really insignificant, and there is available for that. I think it deals with the grease trap. All the restaurants are putting them in. Some people are resistant to it because of the expense, but from what I understand, there's no way that the Sewer Authority can waive that requirement for one business and then insist on it for every other business.
Well, is there any way to get them to, like, move a little bit faster so that he can make the money to pay for that?
Well, the money has to be paid before, it has to be installed before they can open up. That, that, the business, business is open for business, I understand.
Oh, yeah, but-
Just that the new, the new wing-
Yeah.
-the new dining area isn't open.
No, and it's been clear, and it's been a long time that it's been papered up so that, you know, they can't take advantage of it.
Yeah.
And that, that's a shame.
There's lots of reasons why that could happen, though, so.
Yeah.
Engineering, legal, et cetera. And that's why I hesitated to answer, because I don't know what the situation is, but-
No requirements are just-
I think we've got a couple of good ideas.
Yeah, it comes from DEP primarily, and it's not the only restaurant with the issue, but we, we have no real way around it ourselves, so the ball is really in Fami's court. He's got to make the commitment to do the installation. My sense is that, once he pays for it, it can be done very quickly, because it's just a hookup on the, on some of the sewer, the sewer pipes going out of the kitchen. Not the sewer pipes, but the, the pipes go, leaving the-
Drain.
The drain, that's right.
How expensive are the-
Honestly, that I don't know.
Okay. And could, would somebody be kind enough to reach out to him? Because it, again, you know, I'm very grateful for the businesses that we have here in Newtown. They pay taxes so that we don't have to pay as high a taxes.
I'm there every Friday, so he can-
Oh, me, too. It's fabulous. But, you know, I overheard him talking, and I would love, I would love them to expand and bring more people in, and, you know, their food is better than just about everybody around, and-
Well, the food is still going out the door, just that they can't have any more-
Yeah.
-people sitting inside the restaurant, so that guy hasn't changed at all, just-
But this is holiday time, and that's when people-
It would have been great if they were open, but-
Yeah.
He needs to talk to his financial people and arrange for, if he needs a loan, he needs a loan, whatever. But there's no way that we can avoid the certain, the legal requirements for that, that grease trap. Everybody has to install it, unfortunately. Most have, but one or two have not.
Okay.
And I, I think the takeaway you should take with you right now is the township's doing everything we can to speed it along as fast as we can within the limits of the, of the law. We're doing it as we can. And I, I'm confident that when it's in our hands of the township, we're moving it.
Okay.
So, and at this point, I'm sure we're not the holdup, so, but just want you to take that back to him.
I shall.
I have explained that to him before, but, you know-
I shall.
Now, he can see it on camera, and you can tell him.
Well, that's why I wanted to come and speak to you, so I can hear my end, because I know the end that I was hearing.
Sometimes it helps if multiple people say the same thing.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Again, happy holiday to all of you.
Same to you.
Happy Hanukkah.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Minor approvals. I think we have a Historic Architectural Review Board.
Correct.
And Peggy Driscoll is here to give a report.
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, member of the Historic Architectural Review Board. We met on December 14th. We had one item on the agenda, Relief Acupuncture at 9 South Sycamore Street. At the December 14th meeting, the Harb Board reviewed and recommended that the Board grant a certificate of appropriateness for a wall-mounted sign and a hanging sign in Sherwin-Williams 2936 Emerald Black with Sherwin-Williams 7005 pure white lettering.
Does that require a motion?
It does, in fact, and the motion would sound something like, a motion to grant the application of Relief Acupunctur, that's the name of the business, for a certificate of appropriateness for a sign at 9 South Sycamore Street, subject to compliance with the Harb memorandum just mentioned by Ms. Driscoll dated December 14, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? I know that when it comes to Harb-
Just one question, Mr. Chair, for me.
Yes, please.
This was approved unanimously by Harb, because I don't, not that it ma, I didn't, just usually we see signatures on the form, and there's no signatures.
Oh, we probably just forgot to pass it around and sign it.
No problem.
But everybody, it was unanimous.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board? I, I know that if, if Harb is for it, then, you know, I defer to them with pink colors and designs. So, very good. We have motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the approving the certificate of appropriateness for Relief Acupuncture, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, good. And moving on to other committee reports. While you're there, you want to do a, Planning Commission?
Okay. Good evening. The Planning Commission, we met last night. First item on our agenda was a PRD variance for Lavin at 169 Clogdon Drive. Teresa Lavin was in attendance to review her application for a covered roof for an existing patio with a rear yard setback of 26.63 feet. The Commission recommended that the Board grant the variance, subject to compliance with the review letter of Wilmington verdict dated December 15th. The next zoning hearing board app we had was Mendola at 135 Swamp Road. Stephen and Julia Mendola were in attendance to review their application for variance for increased impervious surface from 16.2% per prior variance to 22.6% to build an in-ground swimming pool. The Commission agreed that the Board should take no action, subject to addressing an amendment to the Stormwater Management easement to the satisfaction of the township engineer. Next, we had a sketch plan for KRE Group at 42 University Drive. KRE Group presented a plan for development of 17.8, of a 17.87 acre parcel in the OR Office Research Zoning District to construct a luxury rental apartment building with 225 units, 244 surface parking spaces, and 232 garage parking spaces. It was noted during the presentation that the land had previously been approved for a 2,000-square-foot office building. That was in 1990. The joint share does not permit such a residential use in any of our zoning districts. Attorney Ed Murphy indicated that the plan would require a zoning amendment, which the applicant preferred over a use variance. The commission members had many concerns about the size and intensity of the project and had many questions about traffic, economic impact, preservation of wetlands and woodlands. We discussed the impact of such a large building on, on the school district. The sketch plan seemed to indicate that the appearance from the bypass would be relatively unchanged. The applicants presented a series of photographs of similar projects in Bedminster, New Jersey, which seemed to feature some commercial components, but there are no plans for commercial uses like a coffee shop or cafe at this development. As this was a very preliminary presentation, the applicant's plan to take the commission's comments and questions and attempt to address them, providing some additional information of traffic studies, demographics of prospective tenants. We were generally hesitant to support such a complete change in the existing zoning. However, we are willing to continue to work with the applicant and learn more about their plan and their successes in other municipalities. And that was all we had last night. Do we have any questions?
Any questions for Peggy?
Uh huh.
I suppose we'll see this PRD variance at a future meeting.
Yes.
And the zoning hearing board, we will talk a little bit more this evening.
Also, I'd like to thank all the members of the Planning Commission for all the time and effort that they put in, volunteering for the township. It's a, it's a big commitment. We get a lot of homework, and I appreciate all of them. And happy holidays to all of you. Thank you.
Same to you, and same, I'll second that emotion.
Thank you.
We should also thank Ms. Driscoll for her-
Yes.
-excellent work as chairperson of the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Peg. All right. Brings us to Board Member Reports. I have a few things to report, but they're all pretty short, so. I attended the Fire Services Commission meeting on, on December 9th, and this is the second in, in a series of what are expected to be quarterly meetings. We meet with the Fire Association, Emergency Services, the Borough, and the Township. And at our, at this meeting, we talked about long-range operations for fire services and, but the highlight of the evening was getting a tour of two fire trucks. Now, they didn't, they didn't let us get up in a cab, but they did take us all around the truck and explain what everything was. That was first items. I have five items. Second one is I attended the Newtown Fire Association meeting on Monday. There was continued discussion about new members and the need to continually recruit new members. We thanked the, the Fire Association for covering many holiday events and special events during this time of year, like parades and treat, the tree lighting, and especially the Santa Run, which was done on Saturday. So they also had a, had a report listing accomplish, a year-end report which listed their accomplishments and their challenges looking ahead. Last night, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. Fourthly, I met with Mike Sellers last week, and he, it was regarding the reviving of a walking bridge, and I think Mr. Clabro brought it up last meeting. A walking bridge over the Newtown Creek, and the bridge was, is proposed to follow the trolley tracks which come in just to the east of the intersection of Sycamore and Durham Road, also known as Washington Crossing Road at that point. So we may, this is, this board in 2019 approved having our engineer and planners develop a study and a grant application. So this will probably come at a future, as a future agenda item, and Mr. Sellers gave me a resolution, a trial resolution, a, a sample resolution is the word I want, that is almost word for word from the one we adopted in 2019. So we may want to look at that again. I know there's some support for that on the board. And then lastly, I'd just like to wish everyone happy holiday, safe and healthy 2023. The next, the next time we meet will be the reorganizational meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, June, Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, in this room. So that's all I have. Mr. Vice Chair, anything?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Secretary-Treasure, anything?
I'll just make an announcement for Parks and Rec. Pre-register today for the following upcoming programs: Kids Aromatic Crafting, Pokemon Tournament, Movie Madness Mini Art Camp, and Winter Break Sewing Workshop. Other announcements are: Winter Spring 2023 newsletters should be in mailboxes by the first week of January. Six-week summer camp registration will be online by the end of next week. Looking for a last-minute gift? The department sells discounted Regal movie tickets for $9.50 each. These must be picked up in person. Our hours are Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. The office is closed this Friday and Monday. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. Clabro, anything?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clabro. Anything, Mr. Davis?
I just want to say happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you.
Very good. We're all in the spirit. No public hearings, no land development when it comes to reports of officials. Our engineer is, has no items this evening, so it's on to our solicitor. Mr. Shankman.
Yes, the solicitor report is limited to one item. There is a zoning hearing board application that's going to be heard by the zoning hearing board on January 5, 2023, on behalf of the application of Stephen and Julia Mendola, 135 Swamp Road, Newtown, Pennsylvania, to permit the construction of a swimming pool and related improvements around the swimming pool. It's actually the third lot of the Mastro Marco subdivision, if you remember doing the work on that earlier. It's for a 718 square foot in-ground swimming pool with associated improvements. The applicant's proposed an impervious surface ratio of 22.6%, with a maximum impervious surface ratio is permitted at 12%. It's already way above that, but also there was a previous zoning hearing board decision when it was owned by a different, a different owner, that granted a maximum impervious surface ratio of 16.2%. But in fact, the actual existing impervious surface ratio is 20.5%. How it got there is beyond our knowledge. It's not these owners, it's the prior owners. However, there is an increase being sought, but it's only for a very small amount, and when this, as indicated by Ms. Driscoll in her report from the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission is recommending that the supervisors take no position before the zoning hearing board, let the zoning hearing board do its thing. So unless you folks have any resistance to letting them do their job, we would take, I would recommend you take no position.
Anybody differ with that? Consensus is that we send it along and let them do their job.
Very well, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shankman.
You're welcome.
Okay. Managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is $5,911.54, and $54. Plan expirations before the Board, no action required. This evening, we have Chief Forsythe to give the monthly emergency services report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays to everyone. For the month of November, I'd like to report that NFA and NASD responded to 119 calls for service. Emergency Services Department completed 52 annual fire safety inspections in the township and 17 in the Borough. Out of the 119 calls for service, 14 were in the Borough. Emergency Services responded to 11, and the Fire Association responded to three. For the month of November, we responded to 66 EMS calls, 24 alarm systems, three CO alarms, six dwelling fires, one cover, two squad calls, one wires out, one brush fire, three traffic accidents, one traffic accident with fire, four water flow alarms, three fumes in, two stuck elevators, and one vehicle fire. Also, for the month, we had two firefighters graduate the academy, both township residents, Brian Jennings and Brendan Fail. So that's two additional members to our active force. So we are making progress. We're still out recruiting, so anyone that's interested in becoming a firefighter, by all means, reach out, and we'll be more than happy to get you on the, on the list. So that's my report, and we completed the Santa Run. I heard Mr. Fisher mention the Santa Run. It's a great deal of fun for us. It's a long day, but it's a lot of fun for us to provide that service to the community.
I know the children, the children on my street were very excited.
A lot of them were.
Anything, any questions for the, for the chief?
Take care of your cold.
I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Much better, much better.
Sounds better than you, more Monday night.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Thanks for everyone in the department.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Chairman, I have two items on, under my report for the Board's consideration, both of which reflect the 2023 budget, first of which is a resolution establishing the tax rate for the year 2023. If appropriate, I would accept the motion from the Board to enact that ordinance.
Give them-
Or, I'm sorry, resolution.
Yes. We have a motion, motion to adopt the resolution setting the tax rates for 2023. I'll make that motion.
What's the resolution number? Do you know?
It is, there is no number on-
Well, I know, but-
It would be R-27.
27. All right, thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion and a second. Any, any discussion on the board? This is what was passed in the budget, in a couple of different forms. Any discussion from the public?
I object to raising the taxes, especially since you had the, the issue on ballot for the emergency services on Sunday, December 11th. In the Courier, the county receives $5.5 million. Did you take that into consideration of your budget, since Newtown Township is getting some of that money? I guess not. Okay, I think you should. Although, you know, I worked the polls outside over here, and they were handing out the false information, saying it was a nonpartisan thing, that referendum, and it wasn't nonpartisan. Republicans didn't have anything to do with it. They did say yea or nay on either side. So, I mean, they were, they were fooling the public out there, had some words with the, the guy that was telling people it was, and he even got Resnikov involved. But anyhow, $5.5 million, don't know how much Newtown's getting from it, but I think you should definitely take that into consideration, and I disagree with raising the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeApril. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of passing the resolution for enacting the tax rate for 2023, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Final, final item under my report, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution establishing exempt personnel pay for the year 2023. This is for all personnel that is exempt from membership in the union, and also for CWA bargaining unit members who receive an hourly stipend above and beyond what the union contract specifies. Appropriate motion would be a motion to adopt resolution R-28 in accordance with the 2022, 2023 budget.
We have such a motion? I'll make that motion. Do we have a second? Resolution to support the pay for exempt township employees.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I took a look at the 2022 salaries and compared them to 2023 salaries, and other than three people here, they were, basically went up by 3%. So, and again, they were what we voted on in the budget, so that's why I'm supporting it. Any other board comments?
What happens if this is not approved by the Board?
Then there would be no pay increases in accordance with this resolution.
Any other questions from the Board? Any from the public? I guess I would say if we, if we, if we got quality people, we had the pay. So, other than that, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the, of resolution R-28, resolution for pay, establishing the pay for exempt township employees, say aye. resolution for establishing the pay for exempt township employees, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to note that the board met executive session to discuss matters of personnel and collective bargaining, and that's all I have under my report. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. All right. That brings us to minutes, bills list, and reports.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our December 7th meeting.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of approving the minutes for December 7th, 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing.
I'd like to make a motion to pay our bills in the amount of $152,648.31.
Second.
A motion and a second, thank you. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of paying our bills according to the bills list of December 21st, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the total of inter-fund transfers in the amount of $384,000, even.
Second.
A motion and a second, thank you. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of paying our inter-fund transfers according to the December 21st bills list, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing.
I'd also like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, happy holidays, good health to everybody.
Yes. Thank you.
Stay warm this weekend.
Very good. That brings us to our second round of public comment. Are there any public members who would like to comment? Mr. DeApril.
John DeApril, Newtown Grant, Vegas and the best. Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned the walkway, the bridge to the borough and everything, and I seen on an article on this patch online or whatever that the township was going to pay more than the borough. Well, you know, I know everybody I know that lives in the township that will go to the borough drives there. And since the borough claims to be a walkable town, they would be most of the people using this bridge. So, why is the township paying more? I mean, Mr. Sellers likes to do a lot of things for the borough, but, you know, does he want to pay for it? I think not. Years ago, I think it was Pendot talked about replacing the, I think it was the Center Avenue Bridge. It was one of the bridges for the automobile traffic to go into the borough, and shut it down, even the township didn't like it. And they said, oh, Stark Bridge, a Stark Bridge. Well, might be in the Stark Bridge, but the traffic that goes over is not historic. And, you know, they go and shoot something like that down, but they want to build a walkway? Come on, you know. The most important thing I wanted to say is for you anti-business supervisors up there, at least half of you are, you know, again, in the Courier, December 11th article about, title was, "Was Green Parrot Owner Bullied by Council Rock Teachers Over Film Showing?" And it mentions one of our illustrious supervisors up there that got involved in something she shouldn't have, messing with the guy's livelihood. I mean, you know, he rents that room or lends it out to people, and just because it happened to be a controversial subject, I mean, I would have liked to hear some of the dialogue that went on after they showed this. You know, not everybody has kids in Council Rock School District, and, you know, I think it was just terrible that one of the supervisors would speak out and stuff about, you know, instigating other people and bullying, and said they were going to protest if they decided to go through with it. Bobby Lux, a friend of mine, who's a really nice guy, I mean, he decided not to have it after all this. He was surprised that he was actually bullied into not showing it. I mean, this is one of our township businesses. To cut out, you know, one of the ways he has of making money is absolutely stupid. You know, so I just wanted to bring that up, and, you know, you guys know who it was, and it is terrible. I hope they don't decide to run again for election, because, you know, this is terrible, knocking down one of our great businesses in the township. People come from all over, spend money in our township to go to that place. I mean, I don't agree that it might be the best place, but it is a place, it is a destination. And for a supervisor to speak out against it is terrible. It's terrible. Thank you.
I'd like to say you have your facts totally wrong, and no supervisor spoke out in any capacity. Thank you.
Are you saying J.D. Mullane lied? You're saying he lied? I mean, here's a reporter that's been on the Courier forever, not really forever, but as long as I could remember. And he's not one of the newbies, one of the new people they get since they went through management changes and stuff like that. Mr. Mullane seems to be pretty credible, credible. And, you know, I know you get involved in things you shouldn't have. As a supervisor, you shouldn't, you shouldn't do that. Remember, health and welfare of the residents. This had nothing to do with health and welfare of the residents. So, I believe Mr. Mullane, not you. I would never believe you from now on.
Thank you, Mr. DeApril, for your opinion. Okay, any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, just an item or two of old business. I believe the deadline for sending in resumes for township boards and commissions is tomorrow, I believe. The last one I saw, December 22nd. So, if you're interested in being part of a township board or commission, please check it out and submit your name. And the instructions for doing that are on the township website. Other than that, I guess that's all I have. Any new business? And we already talked about our executive session that we had. Seeing none. I will call this meeting adjourned and wish everybody a happy and healthy New Year once more. Thirty-nine. That's 27.